That's when I heard it, so I'll have to relay the call. September 5th, after the plugging board. Take a minute, three minutes, and I'll go for the motion. What's the second one? Oh, Foley. It was because it was... yeah, they should have thrown it out. So who is it? Bing, Bing, and Bing.
Oh, second?
And changes in rushes. Alright, and all's in favor of I? All's opposed, A? Done deal. First up. B, L, A. No, I did. And where's Junior? Where's Inball? Let's see if he can, let's see how to... This is bad television. There's gotta be a story. Gotta get you. I haven't heard from Arthur, and I don't know what the story is with Jessica Rabbit.
There's a new Shadow Puppets that mews the crowd.
The shadow's too diffuse. Won't work.
Could try anyways. Free best possible location, will you?
Any drains you can spoil tonight? Any hearts to break?
Everybody's.
Oh, good. I'm in the mood.
132 10th Street.
It's, oh, it's on the other side of the fairgrounds, right? It's, that's on the left, it's right next to the fairgrounds. This is one back?
Yeah, it'd be the last one.
By Hausmann's or...
Yep, across the street from there. Then by Triangle Street and back.
It's across from, what's his name?
We did this maybe ten years ago. We did the same one, and they never did anything with it.
Oh, really?
Reconfiguring the house, they moved it a little bit further back, into different styles, so...
What's the lay of the land there?
It's just, well, pretty flat, until you get in front of it, and it rolls right down. Here, this one kinda shows. I got one, another one, another photo I took today, but the email didn't come in for some reason.
So they're gonna trash this and build a new one?
Yeah.
Where are they relation to the, to the lake? They are, uh... Right now, they're...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, it's a deck. And they're gonna end up being... Thirty-seven? Thirty-seven. So they are kicking it back. Your suggestion or theirs, or this is from the original idea?
Uh, that is the Muslim Valley's proposal that's out there, and that works with the septic design they've got.
Septics behind the house?
Yeah.
New one?
Yep. Shining system going underneath the parking lot. And that, that's pretty much your only areas, is when you relocate these, is to put that septic system right under the parking lot to utilize both as one.
See. And it's relatively flat, the two...
And so the ground there is, is stable, it's not, doesn't get wishy or anything like that, from the strength side?
On the backside?
Yeah.
That's all the moveable fresh gravel back there, or a bank or a...
So? Geez, I like the trailer this. Take it home. Back here? Guest house?
I would imagine, I mean, it's gonna be designed for year-round.
Yeah, yeah, you have to.
Yeah, she's an elderly woman, so I don't, I don't know if she'd live there year-round or not.
Have you been to the place, was it insulated, or do you know?
It's a locked cabin.
Oh, just a locked cabin, no log... On the inside too, there's no drywall over there, anything?
Correct. It's a true locked cabin, too, Frank.
Cool. What had been approved years ago?
Uh, it was a little less, 'cause the septic was positioned a little bit closer, and the house was a little deeper. So, I'd have to look at the actual number, but it wasn't as much bad. 'Cause the proposed house was built a little longer in, in Skinnier.
Uh, they have to pump the septic, or will it be...
I think that's gravity.
Now, is it gonna have any kind of walkout cellar business deal, or?
No.
No.
And which way is the roof line go? In the front, back, side, side?
Correct. Getting those on the two sides. I'd still go with, and with this here, it's not an aqua-wash shed lake. And I haven't dealt with the Shaftley Act and youth conservation, so I'd work with the York County Water and Soil, Joey Anderson, to do the designs out there. And I've included the verbiage on the permits to require the drip line trenches, 'cause occasionally Joe, that's not out of his plan, but we'll incorporate it into ours.
Super, and it's, it's next to nothing anyway.
Exactly.
Anybody ready comments, questions? Tom? Oh, well, hey, make a motion.
I recommend we follow Kenny's recommendation. With the assistance of York County Soil and Water.
Right, our standard boiler point. Um, alright then. Any further comments, questions? Motion is to accept Ken's recommendation, York County Soil and Water will do the, what do we call it?
Best management practice plan.
Super. And we're gonna also throw in the drip line trenches. All's in favor of I? All's opposed, A? Super.
Now, by B and P's, you're talking about the construction. When, when you're talking about B and P's, are you only talking about, you're talking about just the erosion control?
Whatever Joey Anderson can come up with to benefit the water quality of the lake, is how I...
Right. No, but you're talking about just the standard water, uh, erosion control on the site, and then, but plus the plan, is that what you mean by best?
Definitely, yeah, the revegetation plan for the old house was, and then whatever. This site's fairly flat, it doesn't have a lot of issues with it.
Right.
But, um, it may give him an area to do some other things. The driveways, usually the driveway is the issue, because the road's an issue, if you're low point of the road, you're taking all that water. So if he can start out at the driveway with, um, sumps and, uh, plunge pools, things like that, I don't think he's gonna need that much, but it gives him a, uh, open slate to do what he feels best for the water, and it gives us an opportunity to do it.
Sounds great to me. What's up, what's next?
Loop Road.
Loop Road, wait a second, don't tell me, loon?
Loop Pond. This is right at the corner, Richard Road and Loop Pond, the Avery's. And there's really no room to move it any further back, and we'd be eating on the setbacks for the road.
Kenny, what are we looking at, the little thing with the trellis, the windows?
The house, brown house. The pitch is taken back, so you can see it's at the Y intersection of the two roads.
Is it a log siding, is that there?
Yeah, or a wood siding, I'm sorry.
Let's see, a garage. So, uh... Are they second tier or first tier? They have the, the east side on the loop from the lake side.
Uh, it used to be Middle Road, it's called, when you go into the first entrance into Loop.
Yeah.
You can see the Westley side pulling in, there's a first left right there.
Are they on the lake side or on the...
It's not already expanded?
The thirty percent?
Yeah.
I, I haven't done a thirty percent there, so the foundation's exempt from it anyways. But I think it's an old novelty siding or something like that.
Yeah. So what exactly is the line there?
Basement only made.
Oh.
Just the basement, exactly?
That's it?
Well, they can't really move back, 'cause of the road. Correct.
Yeah, I thought the basement only came...
I guess so.
Right, so they've got an existing septic plan, so whenever you're doing a foundation under non-conforming structure, ripping it down, building brand new, or more than fifty percent of the value of it, that's when you need to make sure it's in the right spot in this process to relocate. This here, there's really no room to move it back, so they're in the spot.
So they're saying they're putting a foundation, they're not ripping down?
No, they're just, they're jacking the septic, putting a foundation.
And they've got, and their septic's already...
Uh, septic was installed in ninety-six.
And how much area do I want?
Sixty feet.
Sixty feet.
They only have ninety feet of French.
Pardon me?
Nine feet.
Nine feet of beach furniture, lake furniture?
Yeah.
Is this one of those pilets or something?
Yeah, it is.
So it's, it's an L shape, as you get back, there's two roads back, there's...
There's water.
I haven't figured out my...
Is it already, I mean, why do they wall foundation?
The, the house definitely needs something, it's too low to the ground, which is creating a lot of moss, mold, and rock when they're down too low. And, uh, it's the base of the whole investment, now it's just got, uh, stumps and rocks for its foundation, you know, that they originally built it off, so...
Oh, it's on some kind of stone or something, or it's on piers?
Stumps and rocks.
So you can see...
Yeah, there's like some granite.
Just stumps over there?
Which was available, and they cut the trees down and just used the stumps.
Absolutely.
And you get forty-five years out of it.
There's some big places in the Northeast that...
If they draw, if those slabs dry out properly, then they crumble into like sections. I look, I look, they dissolve, it's hard to...
And it looks like it's relatively flat there, eh?
Yeah, it is. I would still, with this has a water running off the roads that come down in that one area, so I'd still work with York County on that one, the same thing.
And see what they can do with it, yeah. And, and the roof appears as if the gables slack towards the water as well, right? Or not?
Maybe you can see...
No. It doesn't?
No. So I'd do the drip line trenches on it too.
Alright, super.
His grandmother.
Are you seeing those honeyflies?
Yes. I think they're trying to preserve as much of the...
Yeah.
Taking off the knocker round?
Right, they're gonna have to revegetate the site once they're down.
It wasn't in the order, it was in my house.
Alright. Anyone have any comments, questions? Is there a will? Let's see one on that. It's not on this one.
It's a point level on the left-hand side of the house. And that's what it was in ninety-six.
Yeah, I see the point. Way in, like, huh? And the new septic is, oh wait, this is, the, the old septic isn't just ultimately new, is that what you said?
Yeah. Right up against Loop Road, kind of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright.
And is there a cutoff date on septic that you go by?
If it's a state-approved, the, the law reads as it's state-approved, which would stand in nineteen seventy-four. So as long as it's functionally dependent and working, it's not under, um, failure of any means, that it's fine. Which is kinda tough, some interpretation of law, you could look at that, if it was before seventy-four, it's still legal, because it wasn't required, then if it's not malfunctioning, then it's working fine. That's what a lot of people sometime have an issue with, that the system's fine, and it's not, you know, malfunction, and they should be able to use it, but, you know, working with the DEP, their theory is, now's the time, you've got that whole thing ripped apart. If your septic was from nineteen seventy-four, or before, forty, fifty-year-old system possibly, so now's the time to fix it, get it all done, relocate the house to the best practical spot, get the new septic in, revegetate, and now it's perfect.
A little picture of Kenny's recommendation. With the, uh, into York County Soil and Water.
And the drip line trenches.
Yep. Any, uh, any other comments, questions? Alright then, all's in favor of I? All's opposed, A? It's a done deal. Come on, we gotta deny somebody.
Well, I've never found a reason to be able to deny somebody. Because you have to condemn it, I mean, we've had the...
You missed some good ones, here, people.
I must have, in my break, in my couple of years off, but, I mean, I know we had steeped path roads on. That was a tough one. But it ended up being doable, and the person was willing to go through this and that and the other things, so, I mean, what is our role? I mean, we can't, I can't, I can't ever do, I want to...
These are all ones that are within a hundred feet, we try and move them back to put it through the...
Yeah, I know, I know the rules.
They're not conforming.
Most of it, what I've done is, I've talked to the people, and without wasting people's time, we've relocated it to the best spot as practical.
Hey, wait a minute.
It's Richard Ness, is it?
Yeah, it is.
This, uh, he's looking, doing a foundation underneath it.
Under the barn?
Yeah. It's currently twenty-seven feet from the road. They're proposing moving it back to forty-two. Setback there would be seventy-five.
And so are they gaining with that?
They're gaining fifteen feet.
No, but I mean, when else would they do it?
Your what?
Foundation, barn.
So the whole thing was moving, and they just were making smart?
Yeah. Is the current foundation coming in?
Yeah.
It's a roll.
I see them now.
That's what we did with the, the one I did years ago, but that was just...
Do you have friends who are gonna, how to get into stone, or they're gonna do...
Put it straight. They like, just put that picture to that. The tree just cut down to the...
Oh, really?
Keeping the stone or... In a forest?
Anyway, get a four, hole in the foundation, take the stone away, or, that's how I took it.
How to keep those stones?
Take them away and use them for something else.
For something else, that's what I mean.
They'll be on the property.
Keep them on the property.
A lot of rocks.
Yeah, there are a lot of well-chosen rocks at one time.
So how much, how much? More land are they gonna have to clear to move this back?
It looks like the pitches, they cleared it.
Oh, really?
That's the White House, is that? Yes.
And how long is it? It's...
The barn?
Yeah.
Fifty, two hundred?
Oh, man.
Yeah.
What else is gonna, is it gonna be able to keep that?
Yeah, it looks good, even, all good and stuff like that.
I wanna be around and go and roll it, that's for sure.
I didn't thaw through the bottom of it, but it uses, as long as your roof's good, and you're up out of the ground enough, they, they go forever.
It's so sad, and you, online, they don't try and keep it.
And they're, uh, it's just to get it further back.
Maybe they put the rocks as a facade or something.
Basically.
That was their proposal, is to move it back to fifteen feet.
And this foundation underneath, is that gonna be usable cellar, or is it just gonna be...
I believe, I haven't got the full building plans on it yet, but I believe it's a full basement, 'cause it's a wood floor in the structure. You can walk in there now.
Underneath it, can you?
You can kind of skip a little bit someplace, but you can...
Oh, jeez, I, I don't, the only time I was down there is when I accidentally went through the floor. And that was, uh, no kidding.
Yeah. I believe it is.
Wow. Well, I mean, we, more often than not, we, we all tend to know somebody that is having something done. I know these people, I've done work for them in the past, although I am not doing, I'm not any part of this.
Like us.
And, right, and Tom's worked for them in the past too. And, uh, but we're not gonna nibble on this, so, I'm not voting anyway, but just to let you know. Okay, TV land?
I don't feel comfortable voting.
No, there isn't, go ahead and vote.
I would move away, uh, except Kenny's recommendations, there's no, I don't see any, um, water-related issues here.
No, it's all pretty...
It's just a street setback, is the only issue.
Right, and, and the, the land's pretty flat, and, you know, they'll have to do regular management practices for the foundation anyway, you know? Drainage, uh, whatever, so...
We should ask them, it's a pretty big structure, you ask them.
Uh, I think, I think you have to, don't you?
What's that?
The, uh, trenches are on the bottom of foundation.
You'd have perimeter drains on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The drip line trenches wouldn't be required.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm, I'm just talking perimeter drains, that's all.
I didn't check the map to see if there was resource protection, anything deep back behind them or anything, you know, same...
I don't know about going that way, going the other way, still. But, yeah, but there's...
You get brush and stuff like that.
Although the drainage from that whole hill, it's right down to go all there. And you know, I haven't been behind it to recall if it is any kind of moist.
Well, it goes afterwards from Meyer there.
Your what?
The Meyer. There's a ten-acre pond back there, you can call it Meyer.
Really, behind?
But it's pretty far back from the structure.
Well, three hundred feet.
That's the direction, oh, plus.
Two fifty, oh, okay.
Oh, alright, alright. Alright, Tom made a motion, is there a second? His motion was accept Ken's recommendation. Who's voting?
I think Kenny.
I'll second it, sure.
You can vote.
Yeah.
You can all vote, I don't care. Any more questions or comments?
Give me these pictures.
We'll make time for it. Is there something official, all's in favor of I? All's opposed, A? It's not a done deal. My God, can't we be any more mad than this? Okay, all business, Stormwater, women's subcommittee update, what have you got for us, uh?
Uh, we met, uh, last week, Tuesday, I think, with Paul.
There was him.
Um, he's been busy with his own work, and hasn't had time to dig into a draft, but he's promised to have something, the weekend, I spoke this morning. And by the seventeenth of this month, we have a meeting scheduled. And he's promised to have some privilege for us to review. And just so, the folks that are interested in attending these meetings, we have upcoming meetings then on the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth of September, between Claire and Brenda. And October fifteenth and twenty-nine, between Claire and Brenda. You may not need all of those, and I've...
Wait, what was, I didn't realize, we, October, what's the October one, just tell me.
Fifteen and twenty-nine, those are, um, second and last Tuesday.
We need to give Paul enough time to do his thing. Now, what happened the last time is, because we didn't communicate enough, he came back with questions. And so, he just needed to be resettled and stuff that we had already talked through, but we reconfirmed and re-talked about it, so he's gonna start again, but he has permission to send us to things, in sections.
Yeah, he shouldn't have to wait a month between confirming this, uh...
I, I just set some ten dates on these, and if we can't make the movement with him, we'll just cancel, and I'll give Virginia a call. But I thought, because of the logistics that we have to go through with Brenda, I thought I'd move the calendar forward.
Perfect, yeah, makes sense.
You can always cancel the meeting too, or as...
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, we're set.
But those are all Tuesdays, anyway.
And these are at night, late afternoon?
Seven PM, right here, or upstairs.
Or upstairs, depending on...
Oh, it's depending if someone else is in here?
Depending, depending on where we're allowed, preferably down here, but...
Really? And these are, uh, televised for posterity?
Yeah.
I know. Alright, well, good, well then we'll wait here for you, from you, at the end of the month.
I, I can add one little piece, no, I'm, I'm not gonna go on, and I don't wanna, but the one thing he is asking us to think about is, what would be a zero base, like, what would, say, we were accommodating the whole town. What would be a property that would not require, that would just, where a person could just check, say, I have this, and I have that, I have a conforming property of such and such, with, you know, so many feet of trees, or many, any kind of water. Is there a zero base that would make people comfortable? You know, is there a property that exists, and I guess it's a question for Ken, but it's also, do we want that zero-based property as part of our consideration? Then jumping right into the, um... Forrest Bell stuff, that's what we're following right now, is strictly Forrest Bell. And he's just gonna do another, you know, try and rewrite it, but that is one thing that was kind of nagging at Paul, and and it is a good question, is there a zero, is there a property that...
That this wouldn't affect at all?
That there would be no condition, yeah. I mean, we know that at a hundred square feet, so, I mean, what kind of projects? You know, he's kinda, 'cause he's like big on envisioning big properties and this and that, but, you know, Acton is one of those towns with a lot of carnivores, so, all our properties are different. But, you know, maybe there is a two-acre lot that's got woods on all sides, more than, so many feet, and blah, 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 and, and do we want...
Does he wanna document these, what's the reason, or does, does he just wants to tell them?
No, he just wants to have a zero base, I think, he just wants to have like this ideal, what would be a site that wouldn't require more than just a drip line around the roof, you know what I mean, but are there, is there a single piece of property in town, I guess, that ideally, you know, would not have to do any extra, because they have enough woodland, or because they have enough woodland, I guess would be the thing.
Most of them are probably inland versus next to a lake.
Yes, we're not talking about shoreline, we've already told him that, that he will not find that in shoreline, or in, you know, osset, or even on Muslim Lake, probably, but...
And I think if you're looking at the GIS map and on the town website, you can click on watersheds. It's gonna give you the contours and follow who's in which watershed.
Right.
And you could look at that to see if there's any property that's not in a watershed, and I think you'd be pretty hard-pressed to find something that's not in a watershed.
Right. Or, but what if it has, but what if it already has three hundred, you know?
Before a kid's got to something, yeah.
What if they want some little, you know, silo, and, I don't know, you know, he's just, it's sort of on the idealistic level, but it would create a base. Anyway, that is, that was something that has been on his mind, so I thought I would, you know... Anyway, that is, that was something that has been on his mind, so I thought I would, you know.
You should be, you've been looking at it possibly as setback to a resource. If it met two hundred and fifty, five hundred, a thousand feet from the resource that's being protected, it could be exempt.
Yeah, because, because the amount of.
Vegetated buffer.
Vegetated buffer would already be adequate, that would be the, you know, so are there sites that are already, that, you know, I mean, there might be some, I don't know.
I think there'd be a huge amount. I mean, there's a, now, just about everybody though in town is almost in some kind of watershed, but that doesn't mean that, you know, there constantly be.
Going direct, the molecule might knock the molecule, it might.
But I think there's gonna be a, I think there'll be a fair amount.
We just have to know what it happens.
Would not be affected by this.
Wouldn't it just, the equation would just be, those properties having an.
Yeah, it would zero out in the math that we're proposing anyway. It would be a property that would automatically zero out, but why go through all the, you know, if you can already say, well, there's a certain amount of buffer that you do have, not make it a set that you have to have, but I mean, if your property goes beyond what the need of the LIDs would be and it's obvious enough because of woodland or something like that.
The scope work, the end of the scope work is starting to be away from the buffer.
Could they remove from the scope of work of, you know, the certain LIDs? Right, it would have to be non-slope. But, I mean, I can't envision it, it's just, he was proposing it as an idea and I was thinking, well, it might soothe people who want to imagine their properties as, as within that scope. I mean, I even worry if we designated buffers at my property with all its, the careful and how far away the water actually is, whether it would count because of the steepness and stuff. So, it's just, not wanting to create non-conforming properties. Is there an ideal property that we could define as a zero? Kind of, and if you've got that zero.
Well, no, is this, it's not that the design of this ordinance to create non-conforming properties, is it?
Right, no, 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 that's why, it's just, is there a property that would be a conforming property that would not require?
Yes, yes, yes.
That kind of thing. Beyond what you would normally do without.
Right, got you.
The ordinance in place.
Got it.
Now, a lot of people are already doing LIDs immediately around their house, so. It's a property amount thing.
Just tell them, yes, there are, there are some.
But can we, is it something that we wanna sort of try and define as an exemption?
Any property that would meet the buffer from the resource is.
But we don't have a set buffer, what we're doing is.
Well, you don't have to come up.
Yeah, see, our formula is based on.
But be realistic, you know, don't go.
We don't wanna come up, I don't wanna come up with a buffer, actually. Does the state have a buffer that would automatically exempt?
We have the buffers in the LIDB, but it's kind of still.
They're arbitrary, we don't have.
Yeah, we're gonna use them.
We can't use them plus, I don't wanna get back to that, but we can't use both buffers and a formula based on percentages of coverage and percentages of disturbance because.
We just love the land.
You won't end up with anything that you can do, we can't do both at the same time, but we might be able to create a zero base. Anyway, I just thought I'd put it in everyone's mind, it's on Paul's mind and we talked about it kind of briefly, but we're still moving on without that.
Got you, got you, alright.
We still have a tentative meeting with the, uh, the DEP working with, to give you a show.
Oh, you haven't had that yet?
We've had one, one, the guy by the name of Jeff Dennis, we, I think we mentioned it to you.
Yes.
Back in August sometime, and we haven't been informed about the next date, but the folks at the table on this meeting are Wendy Garland, who we know from, well, what's her name? A DEP employee, Jeff Dennis from DEP, Teresa Galvin, who's the new Joe Anderson, and Linda Schein. Is that it?
Mm-hmm. Teresa Dennis, that was last time.
Hopefully, we can, Linda has said that they will be meeting again as a group in September. When we hear about that, I'll give Brenda a call and she can, she can spend the week on there.
Terrific, great, anybody with any else? Good night, TV land. That's it?